I'd like to call to order the March 9, 2016 meeting of the Southborough School Committee. First quarter of business is the annual public hearing on the budget. It's time for fiscal '17.
Thank you. Good evening. This is sort of the final process in the approval of the budget for FY 2017 before our town meeting appearance. And this evening it is the public hearing where we share information regarding the line item for our FY 2017 budget. I'd like to begin by saying the Southborough Public Schools has identified its priorities for the FY 2017 budget. These priorities are included in the public hearing document. The Southborough School Committee is committed to providing an exceptional educational experience for all students in a cost-effective manner. It commits to a strong partnership with parents, community, and a positive working relationship with other parts of the town governments in the development of the school budget. The budget priorities and the mission of the Southborough School Committee serve as guiding principles by creating a framework for discussions and decisions taking place throughout the budget process. The FY 2017 budget was voted and approved by the Southborough School Committee at its March 9, 2016 meeting. A copy of the FY 2017 School Committee voted and approved line item budget is available online through Central Office and distributed again this evening. I will be providing a summary of each of the budget subcategories by function code as part of this evening's public hearing process. Function 1,000: District Leadership and Administration. The Southborough share of School Committee Superintendent in Office, Assistant Superintendent in Office, District-wide Administration, Finance and Administrative Services, Personnel, Legal Services, Administrative Technology. Function 2,000: Instructional Services. Supervision, Principal's Office, Building, Technology, Teacher Salaries, Teacher Specialist Salaries, Instructional Technology, Technology Specialist, Substitutes, Librarian/Media Salaries, Professional Development, Textbooks, Instructional Materials, Instructional Equipment, General Supplies, Instructional Services, Classroom Instructional Technology, Instructional Software and Guidance Services. Function 3,000: Other Students Services. Includes Attendance Services, Health Services, Transportation, Cafeteria Services, Student Activities and Athletics. Function 4,000: Operation and Maintenance of Plant. Custodial Services, Custodial Supplies, Heating, Electricity, Telephone, Gasoline, Water, Sewer, Maintenance of Grounds, Maintenance of Buildings, and Maintenance of Equipment, Networking and Telecommunication, Technology Maintenance. Function Code 5,000: Fixed Charges, which includes Rentals and Leases. Special Education. Function Code 1,000: Supervision. Southborough share of District Leadership. Legal Services and Administrative Technology. Function Code Special Ed: Instruction. Includes the District share of Supervision of Director of Student Support Services and Assistant Director of Student Support Services, Assistant to Special Education, Office Instruction, Teacher Salaries, Professional Development, Textbooks, Instructional Technology and Psychological Services. Function Code 3,000: Other Students Services. Health Services and Transportation. Function Code 4,000: Operation and Maintenance of Buildings. Telephone, Electricity, Maintenance of Grounds and Equipment. $7,000. Fun Code 9,000: Includes Programs Non-Public Schools. The total cost of this function code, 9,000, is $1,466,000, which is offset each year by our Circuit Breaker grant reimbursement receipts. This year, or next year, excuse me, FY 2017, that $1,466,000 is offset by similar reimbursement funds from Circuit Breaker of $568,954. The total FY 2017 operational budget is $19,401,863, representing an overall increase of $492,863, or 2.61 percent over the FY 2016 operational budget.
Very good. At that, we open it to public comment, I believe. Is there any public comment on the budget? Okay, then. I guess that's it for our public hearing, right? At that, I will close the public hearing and go into our regular monthly meeting, which starts with audience sharing. Is there any audience sharing? Okay, then. We'll move into new business, and I believe there is none at this time. So we'll go on to old business, first which is legislative update. Susan, did you want to start off?
I would, yes. We have our exciting event that we look forward to each and every year, and this year we save the date, Day on the Hill, which is an opportunity for school officials and school committee members to travel to the State House in Boston to meet with our legislative team, to talk about issues that are relevant to our district concerns. And I know each and every year, Southborough sends quite a number of representatives, and last year, we actually had an opportunity to sit, I think, with Carolyn Dykemore, Representative Dyke, for almost an hour. We know that this is meaningful, a meaningful activity for us to engage in, simply because of the feedback that we've received from our legislators and the impact our conversations have had with them over the years. Specifically, you know, last year we talked a lot, as we always do, about special education reimbursement and what are acceptable expenditures, or what should be considered expected acceptable expenditures. But last year, we talked a lot about the kindergarten grant and making sure that that was refunded or funded once again last year, and with great success that was able to happen. So it is a good time to meet with legislators, and again, they also provide a number of workshops and forums to inform the public about pertinent issues. So it's a day well spent. This year, it's April 26, and if you would like, we would be happy to register the contingent, but I think you can register it on your own as well. And I think we always carpool, so that's always an important part of it. And I think if you're interested in having us register you, Cheryl LeBree is not back yet, but Diane and Nancy Bisset are fillings, our backup team, are doing amazing jobs, so we can just send an email, and we'll be happy to do that on behalf of everyone. There's also, we talked a lot about the Foundation Budget Review Committee earlier this year. There was quite a large packet of information that was shared, and it's something that has been discussed year after year after year. The Chapter 70 Funding Formula is quite frankly a dinosaur in terms of representation of true costs in today's educational environment. And a commission, and the committee was formed last year, and they did release their suggestions for improvements to that. And I believe there is a resolution calling for full funding of the Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations, and here is a synopsis of that recommendation for the committee to review and take up for consideration. Could be a very good topic for Day on the Hill, if not before.
It's also a topic that the MAS, the Mass Association of School Committees, is pushing. As some of you might have seen, there's a bunch of school committees across the state that have signed on to this resolution, so I thought we should consider it and check it out tonight, maybe next month we can take a vote on it.
We actually will be meeting before the Day on the Hill. Am I going to be able to hand Carrie a letter?
Speaking of letters, I got one today from Carolyn Dykemore's office, letting us know that she has signed on to a request for an increase in the minimum aid increment for Chapter 70 Education Funding Formula. There's a whole bunch of representatives sent a letter to Chairman of the Ways and Means and Senate, and the House Chairman of the Ways and Means, encouraging them to increase this from $20 to $50 per pupil, which would be nice. So that was good to see. I think another example of our efforts in speaking to Carolyn, paying on. Anything else?
Not for old business.
That brings us to the Superintendent's report to the committee, starting with the fiscal '16 budget.
Before we begin this section of the agenda, I do feel that it's important to share an update in terms of the situation that has taken place within our district. It's just about a week ago that I sent out one call to all the district users, and certainly there was some information in the press, and as we know, sometimes they get it right and sometimes they don't. But there was a lot of information that was shared. And at that time, I did send, I think it was March 3, a letter to all the district users, and I did commit to providing information as that information became available. So I'd like to just take a minute to address a couple of things that I'm able to share. At this point, it is still very much an active investigation. Before this meeting, I was on the phone again with the DA's office, but we have moved very, very quickly on this situation, alleged embezzlement of funds. I think I just, you know, need to state that because that's really what the charges were. It was reported in the press. And we have done so much in a short period of time to address this issue, and I'd like to share with you a little bit of an update. I'm also hoping to put this out in a one call to our community members so that they appreciate that we are being very vigilant and very proactive, as we have been since this information became known. So at this time, we do have a high degree of assurance that any monies that would have resulted in a loss in fiscal 2016 will be recaptured, as we aggressively are seeking recovery from our insurance providers. This is first and foremost who we are working with and through, but this is one area of several potential identified sources of recovery. There will be no impact on the FY 2017 budget as voted and approved by the school committee. We continue to collaborate with local and state police, working with and through the District Attorney's Office, as they continue to be very active in this investigation. I am in contact with our town administrator. It is very important to continue our collaborative dialogue, and again, have had an opportunity to speak with Mark Purple just yesterday to also reassure him that we continue that collaborative relationship. Our legal counsel continues to provide guidance and has assisted in recommending the services of several financial liaisons. Last week, when I became aware of the situation, I reached out to our legal counsel and asked that we engage the services of what is known as a forensic accountant, someone who will come in and do a thorough and very detailed analysis of how the situation occurred and what we can do to move forward, recover, and also to make sure that our district policies are the most stellar policies that we could potentially offer in the area of financial and budgeting. So we have engaged the services of John Sullivan, who is a forensic accountant with Melanson and Heath. Melanson and Heath is very well-known and respected in the auditing world, as I engage in many conversations with our state police and with Maya, our insurance carrier, and just a wealth of other individuals who have helped us through this process continually. That is the firm they say have you contacted. So we have every confidence in the forensic accountant that we have engaged the services of. This process began last Wednesday with a review of our files and records. It's part of a very lengthy and very in-depth audit process. It is anticipated that this will take several weeks, but it's well underway. I've also requested to give greater confidence and assurance to the greater community, the services of a third-party oversight, so that this individual or firm will provide daily oversight of our financial transactions to just ensure full transparency and third-party lens as we offer checks and balances for our routine financial operations. That gentleman, spoke with him this morning, his name is John Crafton. He is a former, longtime business manager, but he's also a longtime executive director of the Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials. He has agreed to not only provide oversight, but I have also recently engaged his services as we will be conducting a full financial operations review in all three districts, which includes reviewing our business practices for the purpose of determining statutory alignment, processes associated with budgets, financial reporting, payroll and accounts payable, all cash management included in budget and revolving accounts, written agreements between the school community and municipalities, and identification of our strengths, weaknesses, and recommended improvements in the areas of operations of the school district. He will work collaboratively with a forensic auditor who is looking at this specific incident. We want to make sure that we have a very global holistic plan for strength as we move forward, and I'm actually very much looking forward to the recommendations that he will offer. It will make us better than we are and stronger than we've been, so I'm looking forward to that. And we are continuing to look at making sure that we have checks and balances with our accounts and with our financial institutions, just to be sure that we have maximized everyone who could possibly be on our account, so that we make sure we have continual oversight. The District Attorney's Office continues to be actively involved in this investigation. At this time, I am limited by what else I can share, but I don't want to share more to potentially hinder the progress that we are making, which is rapid, nor do I want to share anything that would hinder recapturing of funds or pursuing maximum criminal prosecution that might be coming our way, or someone's way. Any information that continues to come to light that can be shared will be shared, and I will be sending this out to all of our district members in the form of a district user, one call tomorrow. So I thought it was important to put that before you all, so that you can be reassured of two things. We are, and continue to be, expending from our FY 2016 budget in the most diligent, resourceful way with maximum oversight, that our potential for recovery is high degree, that's the term I was authorized to use at this point, and that we have spent a lot of time, as we do each and every year, crafting a very educationally sound and fiscally responsible budget, and this does not impact all the good work that has taken place by our administrators, by our school committee, by our town administrators and boards, to make sure that the budget that will be before the school committee, as presented by the school committee at town meeting in April, is solid, financial practices are well in place, and confidence restored in the great work that has been taking place in this district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
However, I would also recommend to the committee that, not in customary fashion, that we do not vote to approve at this point the financial report of February 29, 2016, but instead we vote to hold, that is, the vote to hold the budget until the review of the findings of the forensic audit are in or known. I have every hope that that will be available to us by the time we meet again in April. This recommendation does not inhibit our ability to continue our routine business operations.
Okay. Everybody want to make a motion to that effect?
Well, do we actually need to move that we hold it, or do we just need not to make a motion to approve?
Okay. That works too.
Yeah.
I think Madonna Burgundy.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Anything else on the fiscal '16 budget? Let's move on to '17, on the budget priorities, which have not changed.
Not changed.
Budget calendar, I think it's changed a little.
Just a little. We did not meet with financial advisory this week, and so that's changed to our calendar. I have, however, received a call from Janet Maney, and if possible, time is short before town meeting, but if it's possible for us to reschedule, and that's the will of the financial advisory committee, we'll certainly make every effort to do that. But she and I have had a chance to chat, and Mark Purple and I also spoke a little bit about this, so I know they're trying to still get folks in to meet with them.
But we don't have a date at this point.
We don't have a date at this point, yeah.
Probably won't be next week.
Well, hopefully you'll be here. But if you have a recommendation, a hope for a date that you want to work around.
Okay, well, we'll just let it, we'll let it fall where it falls.
Oh, we should know, we did meet with Sam Thaiders.
Yes.
Liaison to the school committee, I think went pretty well, so.
Right.
They were somewhat up to speed.
Right. By meeting with Sam, I think.
Right. That was a good meeting.
Yes.
Couple hours well spent.
Absolutely.
In your packet is also a copy of the approved budget, which is really a more, I think, detailed line item of the public hearing function code reading that I provided at the start of the agenda. So that's also in the packet. And up-to-date enrollments are also included in your packet as we provide each week, each month. No significant changes at this point to report, but we continue to track our kindergarten enrollments. Mr. Randall is very vigilant and diligent about getting those students enrolled, so I know that's something we want to keep an eye on as we move through.
I could gain five since we met last.
Good.
So is it 117 now, next year?
118.
118.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Educational policy, I don't believe there are any at this time. Same with policy development and/or distribution.
I'm sorry, can I just come back to kindergarten?
Sure.
So, did we say 118 now? And I see 117 on the.
Oh, it may not have, I think it's 118 now, but it may not have been at the time that that was taken.
Twenty-four.
When this was, okay.
It's hard to keep up with those kindergartners.
Now, there usually is a pretty good amount that even coming from this point forward, isn't there, normally?
Yes, yeah.
So in a traditional year, we would expect that that number would go up from what it is now.
Typically between 10 and 15 from what we anticipate at this time of the year and the beginning of a school year.
The projection does keep creeping up and up and up, like almost one every, one more every month, it seems like.
It does, yeah. Usually a couple more, yeah. And spring's a big time for people to move.
It is, right. All right. Personnel items, we do have a personnel report.
We do. A little combination of appointments, two leaves and two resignations. But that's also this time of year, and the notice is provided by staff.
So the leave of absence, that means that it doesn't come back from a leave of absence, correct?
That's right. Well, Deb Lemieux is actually taking a leave from, both of these are taking a leave from the positions that they had in the district to take positions, other positions in the district. So technically, they have to submit a leave of absence, and this just gives them an opportunity to return to those positions if they so desire by contract. So we have to so note those, but both of them are still with us.
Right. But the average expectation at bottom is somebody who is on a leave of absence and has decided not to return from their leave of absence.
Right.
May I ask for just a little expanded definition of what inclusion facilitator?
Well, we're lucky Marie Allen's here.
An inclusion facilitator is a tenant staff that goes around to the different schools and works with general and teachers and specialized teachers in inclusion practices and helping them develop curriculum.
Okay. Thank you.
So what happens if a headless is that position?
Great thing is, they both still stay in our district.
Right. Communications, still Monday at this time.
Actually, I do have the district doings for February, and I particularly want to distribute them to give and to make note, notice that they hadn't been distributed formally to the school committee. They've certainly been released publicly. But I wanted to draw your attention to the last item on this, and that really is a shout-out and a tremendous note of gratitude to our own Teri Newman. Most of you don't see her because she is behind the camera, but we see her at every meeting in multiple tapings. And I had the opportunity to attend this event. I would say I attend many, but this was one of the most moving and celebratory events that I've been to in quite some time. Teri has been working on producing a celebration of the work that, or of the dedication and commitment of some of our local veterans. It was an amazing presentation. Our own Dan Kalenda from our select board was present. Paul Simoni was also interviewed, and all of the veterans, or most of the veterans, were actually in the audience. Some were World War II. Roger, you were there as well, so you may want to also share some thoughts.
Roger, you were there as well, so you may want to also share some thoughts.
I do.
It was tremendous. And.
I'm going to triple that. It was not only just a great documentary that you created, but it was, I'm worried about the Make America Great kind of, but it was a great event. The fact that the, you know, the veterans were there and just kind of the, just kind of the communication and the socializing and the math awards. It was really kind of one of the best nights I've spent in a long, long time. It was really almost an actor thought that I went. I had nothing to do, I think, over and over, and it was, I'm so, so happy I went. It was, what you put together was wonderful. And again, as far as the documentary was concerned, and, you know, I have a, you know, I have a son who's in Afghanistan now, and I sent him a link to that and an email about that. It was just that moving to me. It was a terrific evening. Thank you very much for putting that together.
I did speak to Mr. Mead and suggested to him that all too often, our students are idolizing and identifying heroes by who they see in movies and on news and on the sports fields. And that may be completely appropriate, but it's wonderful to be able to recognize and appreciate that the heroes are truly the people who live next door to us, and we don't always make note of that. So to have this part of our U.S. history experience and to get to know that heroes are alive and well, and we need to give them a thank you for your service, is, or anyone in public service, is just really what it's about. So thank you for making that happen.
Very good. We all missed that.
But you can catch it on YouTube, because the link is in the district.
I highly recommend, if you want to do that.
Yep. Mr. Martin, no, he's handing me things. Well, you know what? Why don't you share that out, because I think you're going to be taken care of.
So this Monday, we have our second keynote speaker series. We have Mr. Alan November, who is a renowned technology specialist, who will be doing a keynote speech for the community at 7:00 at the Black Box Theater at Algonkin. And the topic of his keynote is Successful Parenting to Launch Your Child into the Digital World. So we're looking forward to that event, and community members are welcome to attend. And it is a free event.
That's nice, yeah. Early in the day. I'm asking sort of a question.
Yeah, so the Superintendent's Curriculum Advisory Committee will be working with Mr. November from 3:30 to 4:30. And then he'll take a brief break, and then we'll put him back to work, and he'll be working with the school committee on current issues in technology. And we'll be having a discussion and dinner, and then he'll begin his keynote work with the community.
And if that wasn't enough about technology, our tech director, Leo Brem, will start on Monday as well.
Okay.
He's been in and out of the district, visiting with us, getting himself ready for his Monday arrival. And, you know, we did share with him that not always do we get an international, well-renowned speaker when our tech directors arrive, but on this particular occasion, it's a wonderful way to celebrate his arrival. I think everyone will very much enjoy working with him. He is truly an expert in the field, and he will be introduced to all the school committee members at the combined meeting next Wednesday.
Great.
So it's going to be a great day, and I suspect he'll be at all three meetings.
Yes.
I think he will be.
If he's.
Yes.
So action on minutes from February 10th.
I do have some corrective minutes distributed to you. The corrections are still noted in red. We did catch another one, we missed a number five. So there was one.
Four, five.
Four, five, so we'll write it down. I'd just like to give a shout-out, and a great job to Diane Ajivis. She is pinch-hitting as Cheryl LeBrie is out, and she enjoys taking minutes. And she's doing a masterful job, making her own, doing just that. So if you've noticed that they look a little bit defined or detailed, we're so thrilled. And I think Cheryl will continue to do just that, but she has so many things on her plate, and Diane actually loves taking minutes, so.
That's what she told me.
She did, didn't she?
She likes to watch the meetings over and over.
And she recognizes some of the, you know, people out in the world now, and they come up to her and say, "Great job." So she's actually enjoying it. We hope it lasts a long time, that enjoyment factor, but we're happy to have her do that.
She knows she gets that in the minutes.
She is doing a great job.
Yes.
Put that in there, great job.
It was purposeful, so she'll continue to do it, actually.
All right. We have a motion on the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of Wednesday, February 10th, 2016. South Grove will pay your fee.
As amended?
As amended. Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. All right, bills and payrolls, I'm sure we have some. And agenda items for next month.
Congratulations, the budget is being passed. I think that's probably a good agenda item. Recap of the town meeting, we'll add. And probably, actually, we're, I note that we changed the date, right? For South Grove in April because of town meeting, so it will be a recap of Day on the Hill. I thought we were going before.
Yeah, but it's the 27th. I didn't think that's the day.
I had it in my calendar as the 13th. I don't think we changed it.
Because I think that's the regional day.
Okay.
Because they always go a week after. I think the dates just.
Everybody pulls out their phone.
No, we should be good on the 13th.
I think we're fine on the 13th.
So.
Did I amend my comment?
Coming in from 11.
Tommy is 11.
And.
And the 27th is the regional.
It's actually scheduled Wednesday. Because you go Tuesday, and then you skip a day, and then you go Thursday. But you know, you ever get that extended?
Right, right, right.
So that's.
It was 13. That was town meeting last year.
I think that might be regent because.
It is regent.
They always skip because school vacation week.
Yeah.
Any other agenda items for next month? There's time.
Yes.
All right. And that brings us to audience sharing once again. Anyone? All right. I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor? We are again.
Another record.
With public hearing honor of.